We had a budget work session. We have these periodically throughout the year and between now and December, there are quite a few of them. So, 2:00 we had a budget work session, and that's, by the way, open to the public, and we're going to have more going forward. We have a presentation today?
Yes.
Lisa Farnin?
Yes. Whoever is presenting, when you go up to the podium and identify yourself, you can do that now. Thank you. Too formal? Nah.
Hi, I'm Lisa Farnin. I live in Doylestown Hunt, and I'm here with nothing but kudos, instead of nothing but net. I just wanted to share with you briefly a little bit of work that we've had the pleasure of working with the township on, and then we're asking for permission to change the color scheme of the sign at the front of our neighborhood, so I wanted to describe that to you as well. So, I just have a couple of quick charts, but basically to tell you that the community, just if you don't know it is, I'm sure you do, but it's right at the south, just south of the borough, at 202 and Main Street, about 250 homes from 1990 was when it originated. We've got a pretty large entrance that's actually township easement that really was falling into pretty, pretty much a state of disrepair, whether in terms of weeding or the wall, the brick wall turning black, or anything else. It was really looking like it needed a refresh. And we don't have a homeowners association, so there wasn't really kind of a clear, okay, let's figure this out and go do it. So, I'm just going to describe to you a little bit of that. Basically, we wanted to refresh the front of our neighborhood. It's about 25 years old. We were looking to simplify the design because there's just a ton of, at the time, three and four-foot weeds that were growing. Again, there's not really a way that it gets maintained on a regular basis on our side. On the township side, you guys have been super generous, always with mulch, with mowing, but the beds themselves were grossly overgrown. The brick wall, as I mentioned, was black, and the sign, as you'll see shortly, has faded over the years, which is to be expected. We were trying to reduce the property maintenance, and we were also just trying to make it look good again. So, what we did, basically, frankly, one of the neighbors that lives right next to it kind of put a broadcast saying, hey, anybody want to work on this? We formed a small committee. It's about 10 people or less. It's open to the whole community, and we've just been just trying to figure out what's a good plan to try to refresh the neighborhood, to raise some money, because again, there's not kind of a annual budget of anything or a revenue supply, and make some plans, and then go try to get it done. Early on, in a great way, honestly, frankly, out of lack of understanding, we approached the township to figure out who, whose land is this, whose wall is this, you know, what's the right process to go through. And that was really when everything started to come together. So, I'm just really here primarily to thank the township for their support of our efforts to try to refresh it. The only word I could use to describe the support that you've provided is extraordinary. I mean, not only was it proactive, I believe I started with Stephanie, and she was like, sure, let's meet out at the site, let's talk through what the plans are, let's make suggestions. She put me in contact with a member of the Doylestown Nature Club to try to look at what should come out wide, to help reduce the incidence of Lyme disease, as well as take out some of the more invasive plants. The situation was, you know, some of the front plants were taller than the plants at the back, so it needed some work. And I couldn't be more thrilled with the support that we got, like I said, both in terms of reviewing what we thought we wanted to do, giving us some great heads up, some great connections, and really helping us to map out a plan that made sense. And then, on top of that, through the township, we were able to get a lot of really, truly hands-on, physical support, which was invaluable. Like I said, there was 10 or less of us in a neighborhood of about 250. Most of them are about as, you know, physical in stature as I am, so it was a bigger undertaking even than we knew at the time. And basically, I just would like to thank the township here now. I'd like to call out by name Stephanie, who's just been incredible. Dave, Director of Operations, she put me in touch with Dave, and Dave helped me work through anything from, you know, finding discounts, helping to avoid sales tax on shrub purchases, to a million other things. Paul Gahr, who I was shocked to read is Road Superintendent. He was like jack-of-all-trades, master of everything, beyond helpful in things we asked for and in things that he just said, hey, why don't you think about this? So, really outstanding. And then your public works staff, I have a couple of pictures, but they did come out and help with the tear-out, helped take out a dead tree, helped trim trees, helped trim shrubs, helped regrade. We actually had the, the grading was such that the water was rushing toward the wall, which is not good, so regraded it so that it would come away from the wall. And, boy, I just can't, you know, our group, when we would meet, we'd be like, they're going to do that, too? And I'm like, that's, yeah, that's what they're saying. They're like, are you sure, Lisa? So, just really, really tremendous, more than we had asked for, and frankly, more than we, as a group, really kind of even understood. So, scope, I think I just covered it, basically, all of it, but basically, it was a complete refresh, I'll call it. And really, what's left now is kind of two major things. One is in the spring, again, we shrunk the beds significantly so that there's far less weeding, we laid landscaping fabric. We will have a small, not too small, but for my house, I'd call it big, but for the area, a smaller perennial flower bed on both sides that we'll plant in the spring. And then we're working to repaint the signs, which are actually in physically decent shape, but as I'll show you in a second, they've faded, as you would expect, over the years, and they need a refresh, both twofold. One is, I think, they need some paint on them just to save them from the elements, and then, secondly, we're looking to kind of simplify the design there as well, which I'll tell you in one second. So, this was before photos. It doesn't do it justice. It was wild and wooly, but that's just a couple to give you a sense of things. And then these are some after photos. This is the township crew, which was out on a number of separate occasions, working alongside us, really just providing support that we would have never been able to accomplish otherwise. And then what we did, you can see here a couple times, oops, you know, we put some grass seed in, again, and straw is down, and we're crossing our fingers that grass grows and that we don't hit the first drought ever in the last six months. So...
(laughing)
And it's been a challenge. The other thing I should mention as well is, there is no power there, and there is no water there. So, we were able to work with Stephanie to access a valve that could be used by the power washer, and now we're kind of using water feeds from two neighboring homes. So, they just helped us think through logistics that we would not have been able to solve otherwise. So, the other thing I'd like to tell you is, we'd like to simplify the design. So, the front of the entrance has a very large brick wall on each side. You kind of drive down Steeplechase to get into our neighborhood. The signs are four-foot tall by nine-foot wide, so they're good size. That's them in their current condition on the top. I believe they've been repainted at least once in the last 25 years. It's kind of a hunt scene. The name of the neighborhood's Doylestown Hunt Estates. So, it, both signs were identical when they were repainted. The one on the right, it's pretty much all gone. The one on the left, that's actually a really good shot of it. It looks worse in real life than the picture. So, what we'd like to do is get the signs repainted. We're not able to do a full, big refurbish, but we think if we can repaint them, we'll get some additional years out of them and do a nice, clean refresh. We're proposing, please excuse my lack of any graphics software whatsoever, we're proposing to go with a simplified color scheme of basically black and gold and get rid of the hunt scene that requires kind of artist's rendering and freehand painting and things that, over time. We did get one estimate to look at having the signs kind of redone, and it was just an astronomical amount of money. So, we're trying, like, we're trying to simplify the grounds, we're trying to simplify the sign, take it down to two colors, so it would look in the format of above, other than it would, the black and white, I'll just use the one on the right. It would be an all-black background with the kind of gold metallic outer rim as it is now, but faded, inner rim as it is now, but faded. The letters are raised, so they would stay exactly the same. And we're looking to tweak our budget to try to get a stencil or some kind of an applique in the middle that would read "Establish 1990," which Stephanie also helped us by confirming when it was that we started. So, it's a change. I think it's a good change. I think it's a change that's more manageable in the long term. I think we could come out with black permanent markers or black paint, you know, in the future. And, but yet, it kind of maintains, you know, it'll be a nice visual look. So, part of the reason I'm here is, in the absence of, you know, a homeowners association to say, we'd like to change the color scheme, honestly, the rendering at the bottom is not perfect, you know, the font may change, or we're trying to figure out something for the center, but it would stay black and gold. So, we're asking, requesting permission to do that with, you know, working through Stephanie.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
Sounds good.
Go for it. Thank you for taking the lead on doing all this.
Yes. Thank you, yeah.
It's, like I said, it's been a committee. There's about probably eight, actually, one is here, but several others behind me, so it's, but it's a very small committee, and we really would not have been able to accomplish, frankly, most any of it. Maybe the power washing, because we paid the person to come out and do it, but the balance of it really was completely due to our partnership with the township.
Oh, good. Looks so much better. It really does.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Thanks for coming in. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're welcome to.
(laughing)
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any visitors or public comment? Take the podium, please, and identify yourself, please, for the record. You are being videoed. Stream live.
Glad I wore a nice shirt on. Hi, my name is Michael Marks. I also live in Doylestown Hunt, and my wife Cookie is here with me. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I wasn't aware of all this activity, but it's really nice to know how much, you know, the township cares about our development. And I should tell you that I think that we actually have over 300 homes in Doylestown Hunt, because I actually handed out some flyers once to everybody's home, and it sure seemed like almost 400. But the reason, the reason why I'm here is, I'd like to talk to you about the Wawa, the proposed Wawa that's going in on South Main Street. I think Stephanie, you and I, I think, may have spoken, I think, at one of the borough meetings.
I think we've met. You're familiar.
That we both attended. And it appears to be moving ahead in fits and starts. And I've been going to all the borough meetings, even though I'm, I live in the township, but the reason why I'm here is that, as I said, there's, there's over 300, perhaps 350 houses in Doylestown Hunt. And all but, I think, just several of them are in the township. There's a couple that are actually in the borough. But our, our development, which is quite nice and is now nicer and will be, continue to be nice, is going to be dramatically affected by the proposed Wawa. They're talking about 24/7, six islands for a total, I believe, of 12 pumps, neon lights that'll look like, you know, a Martian landing zone, and the fact that you're going to have a huge amount of traffic coming, you know, to use this, you know, to get into the Wawa, not only from 611 and from the other side of Main Street, but coming off of, you know, the 202, you know, bypass in both directions. And, I mean, I have a variety of concerns. I'm very sad for the borough, which I know is not your concern per se, but I'm very sad for the borough, because to see this as you come into the gateway to the borough, you know, I think is, is going to be, is going to be a sad thing. But what I'm here to talk to you about is that my concern and the concern of many of my neighbors about the traffic that is going to be created, the difficulty that it's going to cause for township residents to be able to enter and exit our, you know, our development at, most notably at Steeplechase, but probably with residual at heart in Main Street as well. And it, there's also the concern that it's not only going to be difficult, but it's going to create a dangerous situation with cars and trucks possibly coming, you know, down quite fast. It's not clear, it's not clear how they're going to resolve the entrance and exit from the site in a way that makes sense, given you're coming right off of, you know, the bypass, and yet, our entrance-exit to our development is so close to that. So, I'm here to see if the township is doing anything or weighing in in any way, because, or, or trying to influence the situation. My fear is that, as residents of the township, we're going to have little drag, you know, with, with the borough in the final analysis, and they're going to make their decision in a way that's, you know, they're not necessarily worried about township concerns, they're worried about borough concerns. But I think, you know, these concerns go together. So, I just wanted to, I wanted to tell you and hope that you know about this or are aware of it and see if there's what's going on.
Even though this is a borough property and project.
Yeah.
We're all township and borough, all concerned with the smooth operation of the vehicles and the actual safety of any ingress and egress to that place and to Doylestown Hunt. I do understand that Stephanie has gotten some communication regarding traffic and engineering studies about that, and our people are going to be looking at it and weighing in. Our traffic people are going to look in, look into what we're receiving from the borough. Can you speak further to that?
Be happy to. I've shared with the board and our planning commission, and Rick Colallo is the liaison to planning, and our bike hike committee, which is actually a joint committee with Doylestown Borough, are very concerned about traffic, pedestrian circulation, noise, lighting, et cetera.
Yeah.
And the planning commission, I believe, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, are drafting a letter that they will share with the Board of Supervisors, and that will probably be like a joint letter from our planning commission and our board to go to the borough's planning commission and their council, that would outline the concerns on behalf of the township residents and some of the things that we brought up. The other thing is, is that our township traffic engineer will look at the information from the borough. I do have a copy. John Davis, the borough manager, was very kind and provided a copy of the plan to us, so we have a copy in-house. Our planning commission chairman, Judy Hendrickson, came by the other day and began looking at that, and so that they can develop that joint letter and share those concerns with the borough. Mr. Davis indicated that he anticipates that, depending on when all the reviews are done on the borough side of things, that it would probably go to their either end of October or end of November planning commission to start the formal review process, public meetings and things like that.
So, there'll be public meetings in the borough?
In the borough.
Right. And I've been going to those.
And Judy Hendrickson has been there, and we've had, I've been in a couple, and Rick...
Yeah, and I've been pretty vocal about them, because I also have a concern. I mean, I have a love for the borough, but, but insofar as your interests are and our sort of stated or, you know, legal interests are, are the fact that, as township residents, we are potentially adversely affected by however it's going to be put together. And, and I suspect that it's going to go forward despite, you know, everyone's...
It's going to go forward.
It's probably going to go forward, and, and, you know, people like myself are going to do whatever we can to see if we can get it scaled back in some way, maybe it won't be 24/7 or what have you, or maybe it won't look as obnoxious as a, as, I mean, well, but that's, that's not your issue. Your issue, and with respect to our development, sorry, your issue with respect to...
You need to buy a dog poster. We'll get you in a moment.
Yeah. Your, your issue with respect to our development, of course, is the safety and the traffic and the noise and the lighting. So, will the, will people like myself be able to track what you're doing?
Yes.
Will we, will we be able to, you know, get, you know, be notified or...
Are you the point person for the hunt for this?
I don't know if there's a point person.
So, should we, like, communicate with you or check our website?
I have the plans here at the office, if you want to stop by and look at them. I mean, they're full-blown land development plans. I don't, I mean, pretty much what you've said, they're showing, but it's a little bit more detail in terms of the landscape plan and things like that, so certainly can do that. But as I said, you know, our planning commission is working to develop a letter that, you know, they're going to be sharing with our Board of Supervisors and bringing it forward.
Will we be able to see the letter at some point?
Absolutely.
Could I give you my email address? Because we're...
Sure.
You know, it is, I think the problem is, is that people in the bur, or in the, in the development are probably resigned to the fact that it's going to go forward, you know, you know, they've done the zoning change, et cetera, and, you know, there's, there's a number of us that go, and, you know, we make noise and that sort of thing, and we're doing the best we can, but it's not like a major group or something like that. So, to the extent that I can at least be made aware of this and let people know, I'd be grateful, and I, I'd encourage you to, whatever you can, and...
Well, if you come right here, October 22nd.
Oh, okay.
7:00, right here, we're going to be, our township planning commission is going to be reviewing the plans, so...
October 22nd?
October 22nd, Monday night, right here, and they'll be going through everything, and you can offer, 22nd.
7:00?
7:00, yes.
7:00, sorry.
7:00, sir.
And they're going to go through the entire plans, and you'll hear their thoughts and opinions, and you can chime in, your thoughts and opinions, so it's, it's an open.
That would be great. Can I, can I give somebody my email address?
Sure, if you want to write it down and...
And just leave it with us.
Leave it with us, that would be fun.
All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your interest and...
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
It's good you were here, thanks.
Here, I have a piece of paper.
Oh, thank you very much.
And you can just...
Any other visitor or public comment? No, you're not going to say anything?
She's with him.
He's a spokesman.
He said it, right? What he said.
He said it.
All right, and announcements, our next meeting is Tuesday, October 16th, at 5:00. The Budget Works Session is 3:00 on Tuesday, October 16th. We're going to be closed on October 8th for Columbus Day. On October 12th, How to Train Your Dragon.
Of course.
And October 19th, Coco, both start around 6:00. Movies in Central Park at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater, sponsored by the Thompson Performing Arts Series. Bicentennial Celebration memorabilia is on sale. Mercer Tiles and Bricks, the Time Capsule dedication, contributions for the Time Capsule are being accepted until October 15th, and the dedication or the implantation of the Time Capsule is actually taking place on December 18th here. So, put that in your calendar, around, around the time that we have a meeting. At the same time, you can bring your holiday cards for franking by the post office. I have a special stamp on it. We're going to have a Veterans Day lunch celebrating the bicentennial on Sunday, November 11th, at 1:00 at the Senior Center. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month, 9:00 AM to 11:00. You drop off the New Britain entrance to the Central Park. All right, next item on the agenda after all those announcements is the regular meeting of the, good day, thank you, of the regular meeting from September 18, 2018. Minutes' approval.
Did we say that yet?
Minutes' approval from the meeting.
Accepted.
Is there a motion? There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the budget work session meeting?
Permission to accept the budget work session, September 18th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondences, or anything?
Not at this time.
Solicitor?
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Chief?
Nothing.
Engineer?
Nothing.
Director of Operations?
You have a memo from me requesting approval of the Diversified Storage Solutions Incorporated proposal for the purchase of the Police Department Men's and Women's Lockers Evidence Pass-through System totaling $50,048.17. This is the same company we purchased the Public Works Lockers from. This is a CoStar's purchase, so attaches their proposal and my request for approval.
Okay. Within budget, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
I'll move to approve.
There's a motion and there's a second?
Second.
All right, you guys fight over it. I have it as Ken and Rick.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oops.
Okay, I have a, a request for approval to award the second part of our 2018 Tree Trimming and Takedown, Part Two, to Jimmy's Tree and Landscape Contractors totaling $34,275. That includes a base bid plus four add alternates. This is the second part that we advertised because we had money left over in the budget to do more tree work this year. I'm asking for the board's approval. We had, this was put out for public bid, one bid was received, and that was Jimmy's. Jimmy's did receive, was awarded the first part of this contract earlier this year, and they've completed that work.
Okay. All right, what'd you guys think?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Question?
Question?
Yeah. This additional work, is it all safety-related?
Yes, we've identified areas on the trails and road as well.
Okay.
Yep.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else?
One more item. This is some, some cleanup and also a new request for, this is for the Phase Two of the municipal complex building. I have documentation just to finalize a construction change directive that the board had previously approved on 627 for $15,717. This change order includes that change directive, and then also a new request for Penn Builders in the amount of $9,420. That totals $25,137. Mr. Gallant reviewed this information on our behalf. His memo, or cover letter is attached, along with the change orders. The work that we're asking for approval on is some concrete slab work at the entrances, which was not part of the original contract, and Mr. Gallant is making that recommendation, and so does members of the building committee that were in attendance, and we're asking for your approval.
Just a question on the concrete work?
Yes.
Why it was picked up at this point in time? Why wouldn't this have been part of the original design?
I don't know. The architects designed it as just a four-inch slab. The builder is recommending because of that they are entering slabs, that they, what they do, what they call now a turn-down slab, which gives it more structure in the front end, so the frost won't heave it up. They've made, they've had other projects where they've had problems where, where slabs have moved, and there's columns and supports and doors and public entrances, so it's the recommendation of, of the builder and Mr. Gallant to make the change. It's, you know, the standard slab is a four-inch, six-inch slab. It's just, this is kind of belt and suspenders.
Okay. I'm, I'm agreeing with the, with the change. I just hope we go back to Phillips or to our architects.
Amen.
And say, why, why does this happen? You know, they should have recommended this in the beginning.
I'll second that, and I, you took the words literally out of my mouth. This is a great idea. Where are, I don't know if it's Phillips, Donna, whoever, somebody, this is just something that should not have been missed. It should have been picked up or at least optioned in the beginning, and that's what frustrates me more about the change orders than the logic of the change orders, in which, after the vote, if you could, I'll yield some of my time, but whatever happened to Prokaccio Builders, where they screwed us up in the beginning, but the chair can call the vote, I'm sorry.
There is a motion and a second, right? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now going back to the comments. Do you want to have Phillips and Donovan come in here so you can, like, ask them these questions? To what end do you want? How far are you going to go with this? You're going to want a refund? You're going to want, what do you want? What's the point?
One, I want to make sure they're aware of it and they fully understand, and I like an explanation.
Okay, so do you want them to come into the, to a public meeting?
Well, they can, they can do that, or I'll manage it at one of the construction meetings.
Okay.
You know, I'll talk to them there first.
Okay.
And if I'm not happy, I'll come back to you guys.
Okay, fair enough. Are you all right with that, Rick?
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, Ken.
Okay, very good. All right. Tree pruning, did we do that one yet?
Manager.
It's manager.
Well, believe it or not, it is that time of year again when we look at next year's-
Everyone get the calendar?
Jackie put extra on the table, just in case.
Anyone have a problem with it? Looks like we have four regular meetings at 4:00, five regular meetings at 5:00, eight regular meetings at 7:00.
Yeah, I would like to make a few comments. In January, when we talked about our schedule for 2018, I had the same concerns as I do with the schedule this time. Having the vast majority of our meetings during regular standard work hours is a concern for me. I believe that in order to have, we should remove as many barriers as possible to participation in our meetings. And I think those are unnecessary barriers. I also believe shifting the times from 4:00 to 5:00 to 7:00 can be confusing. Sometimes people are concerned that people are going to miss a meeting because, you know, they misunderstood the time that it started. And I don't think that's necessary either. And thirdly, I'm concerned about the people who would take our seats when inevitably we're not here anymore. There are people who work these hours, 8:30 to 5:30, that would do a phenomenal job doing what we do. And I think that we're reducing that talent pool for the next supervisors to come up by setting a precedent that our meetings are during regular work hours. So, I looked at all the municipalities in the county. Out of the 54 that were listed in the county, 50 of them had meeting times at either 7:00 or 7:30. 50 out of 54 between either 7:00 or 7:30 meetings. All of them were consistent times, aside from us. So, and the four that were outliers, all of them were during, were outside of the standard work hours. We were the only one that held meetings during standard work hours. So, I would like to, I would like to ask the rest of the board to consider having our meeting times be consistent and after 6:00 PM.
I would say that, I don't, I don't share all the same concerns with you, but I do, I do think now turning into, it used to just be 4:00 and 7:00, and now we've got 4:00, 5:00, and 7:00. And I do think that can create some confusion. I don't know what the difference is between 4:00 or 5:00, you know? So, I think, you know, it might be a happy medium to pick two times, you know? To split it up between either 4:00 and 7:00 meetings or 5:00 and 7:00 meetings.
Well, what would the logic be of having a meeting that's during standard work hours?
I mean, we've had, we had people that couldn't come to 7:00 meetings, that 4:00 or 5:00 meetings were more convenient for them. And so, we were trying to make it flexible for anybody to come.
So, from my experience, and I admit that I have the least amount of experience here on the board, it seems like the attendance to our meetings was more dependent on the items on our agenda than the actual time period. People will take the hardship of taking a day off work or a few hours off of work to come here earlier. But I don't like the fact that that's actually put on our residents to have to take that hardship.
I don't know anyone who's done that. I don't know a single person who's done that or complained about it. I don't know anyone who's complained about it.
I have heard residents say that they couldn't make it because of work hours.
I would like to, I would like to know who they are, because I have not heard that in how many years I've been on this board.
I mean, and we actually, we made these changes based off comments to the board-
From residents.
Through residents emailing Stephanie, like actual residents coming forward and saying, can you be a little bit more flexible with time? That's why we changed it. We did used to have all 7:00 meetings, so I don't think, I don't think the attendance is a factor of the time. I think you're right, it's a factor of the agenda, what the agenda is. And you see, I mean, if there's nothing hot button on the agenda-
Mary Lou's always here.
Well, yes. But, you know, I think it's more, more that than anything else.
Well, I would love to see, personally, I would love to see a meeting at 7:00 PM consistently. I think having a consistent time would, would make it more attractive for people to come out so they don't even have to think what time of day would our meetings be. But I also think that it would help bring out people who, the vast majority of the people that live in our township that are adults work, and a vast majority of them work 8:30 to 5:30 hours or somewhere.
And everybody on this board works.
Abs, I mean, but, but fortunately for the people- Fortunately for the people sitting on this, on this board, we all have very flexible schedules. I don't think that that's the case for most people. But I, but I would also argue that I would, I would still be comfortable with having meeting times at 6:00 PM regularly. That way, they're still early enough. I know the other argument I heard was that we get tired by the end of the night and if it's a later meeting, but that it's, that's, it's tiring. But like I said, 50, 50 out of 54 of the other municipalities, they're not tougher than we are.
They have a lot, no. They do not behave as well. We have an exceptionally well-behaved board compared to those folks who have 7:00 meetings. They go 1:00 to 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock.
Well-
I can assure you.
I appreciate your leadership in that and limiting the time.
No, I'm not saying credit for it, I'm just thinking it could be start earlier.
I agree with you, and I'm, I was, I'm a 7:00 fan, but I've changed over time. I agree with you, having a 4:00 and a 5:00 o'clock is very confusing. In fact, we thought our solicitor got the times mixed up today. Because of the fours and fives, Ken, Ken?
But I didn't get it confused.
You did not.
I stand corrected, you're right. But the other part that, Jen, anybody wants to be a supervisor and thinks that it's a twice a night, or twice a month job at night is, don't, don't come, don't join. Because I have, two of my meetings are during the day.
Right.
One of Ryan's is during the day.
Absolutely.
Ken is here all day. So, and Barbara-
I don't know.
Pops in and we're here to sign checks, we're here going, we sit down.
No.
I don't want-
I work in my office on township stuff all the time.
So, how do the other 50 municipalities that hold meetings at 7:00, how do they manage and we can't manage?
I don't think it's that we can't manage.
We just choose not to.
I mean, I don't, I hate when we do these comparisons to other municipalities, I mean, for everything. Like, in general, I don't like when we do the other municipality. Like, we, we decided what worked for our municipality, and it was based off of not just us up here, because it's not just about the five of us, but it was from feedback from our residents. And so, we, trying to be accommodating, said, okay, you know, we're hearing feedback that residents want some earlier meetings. We're going to do that. You're talking about the, the majority of township residents that work in 8:30 to 5:00. Well, there's also a lot of township residents that don't drive past 5:00 when it gets dark. And they, and those are a lot of people that do come to our meetings and want to be at our meetings and have historically been regulars at our meetings.
And the thing about folks who will run or not run for supervisor because of the time, I mean, we changed the time in January, and that's when the new supervisor takes their seat.
So, if there's an issue with the time, that person can make the, make the change then.
We don't have to do it prospectively. We can, they can do it when they're seated.
I understand that, and, but my disagreement with that is that when you're a new supervisor, and I still feel pretty new, and you're, if you're looking to run to be a supervisor, and you say, I have to work 8:30 to 5:30 to take care of my family, and I will dedicate every hour after hours to doing things for the township. I will do my weekends, I'll do evenings, I'll do all of that, but I have to take care of my family. You will decide not to run for supervisor because you're only going to be one vote in that January meeting.
Or you decide when your family's a little bit older and you have more flexibility, flexible time. That's what, you know, that's what we all do.
I understand, I understand, but I don't see why we need to limit our meetings, why we need to limit that opportunity.
Well, so, because we need to be flexible for all of the folks in the township.
I think Ryan says it best. I mean, we didn't just do this just to be, you know, to suit ourselves, although I do prefer early meeting, but-
Also miss all the budget meetings. They're all 3:00 and 4:00. Like, we're here today, we've been here, you know?
Since 1.
Stephanie, how would it impact us if we moved our, you know, shifted our 4:00 and 5:00 meetings and combined them to one time?
You could do, I mean, you could certainly move your 4:00s all to 5:00. All to 5:00, or 6:00, or whatever time you want to do. I think where you run into the problem, and I think has been a consistency, is that when you're doing your budget work sessions followed by a Board of Supervisors meeting, you have found that doing those a little earlier makes the board members fresher and crunching the numbers and everything like that and having better dialogue than waiting, because we've done it a few times where-
We've done them after 7:00.
We've done them after the conclusion of a 7:00 meeting.
Or we got them in at 6:00, but that was not enough time.
You know, you only have like 40, 35, 40 minutes to do a budget meeting, so, and because so many of the board members do work and other meetings, you know, that's, we've tried to address that best we can, so-
There are five budget session meetings.
Yeah, there's a lot of budget meetings, and I think we probably do more budget meetings than most of the other municipalities.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we shift our 4:00 meetings to 5:00s. So, we have, you know, 5:00, so all the 4:00 meetings would go to 5:00s, and we could do the budget work sessions before them, and then we keep our 7:00 meetings as well. And that still provides, again, at 5:00, you know, that's still towards the end of the workday. And it's, you know, different than 4:00, but it's not pushing into the, the dark hours of the night when some people don't, residents don't want to come out to drive. So, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it. It's, I mean, I don't know if we need a motion, but I'll-
I don't know if we need a motion either.
That's fine, but I, I-
I'm not sure we need a motion either, but that's okay. No, sorry, we can vote on it, let's vote on it. Any other discussion? Ken, no?
Yeah, all I was going to say is, yeah, maybe there is a compromise, it's not all 7:00, and which I would support, because I think it is important to start those budget work sessions sooner than what we'd be doing at 5:00 if everything else was at 7:00. So, I think it is a good compromise to remove the fours, put them at 5:00, and our budget work sessions stay tied to the 5:00, which I think is a very good idea, so.
All right. So, no fours, all fives and sevens, as they are. Move all the fours, there are four of them, to 5:00, and then have the 7:00s as indicated. And then you just move the budget sessions?
We can do 3:00 to 5:00, and we do a 3:00 and 5:00.
Just two hours.
3:00 and 5:00 doesn't change yet.
Yeah, okay.
Just the fours.
We will, we will make that correction.
Vote on it, I didn't get a motion.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one nay? Okay, thank you, moving on. We're going to leave the sevens as indicated.
No, I know, but, did you just resend it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll update, update the-
With the new bubbles?
Yes, it's helpful.
With the new color code, okay.
Yeah, we'll have Jackie do that.
All right, that's that. Trash haulers, pick-up schedules.
Following your last meeting discussion about pickup days and trying to have, I guess, a restriction on the number of days, because we did have a couple people saying, like in the estates where we just repaved, we have multiple trucks coming through the developments. And I did follow up with Mr. Laren, he did indicate, and it's in my little memo about the, Saturday pickups was clarified that doesn't happen every Saturday, but it, it does happen when certain things happen, like holidays and stuff, and sometimes he feels like it, it becomes a monthly thing. Our restrictions are 6:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday, but as you can see from some of our neighboring, they have no restrictions except holidays.
We're not comparing this anymore.
Yeah.
We were in my-
I was asked to do that.
But this was actually a really good comparison, I would say, because we're-
I was asked to compare, I was standing else.
Pretty good in this comparison.
Yeah, so anyway, I was asked to bring you that information. Now, there is a letter on the table from a resident, a Mr. Buckadori.
Everyone has it, you want to act on it another time, we can do that, we don't need to discuss it now, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, moving on. Supervisors.
Just a thought around that, though, I mean, while it's been a lot, everybody knows, there's been a lot of discussions, a lot of publications about trash hauling. A number of haulers and the frequency of haulers. Neighborhoods, if they wanted to, they could band together and say-
They couldn't find, line together and have one hauler, yes.
Say, take it through Fox.
I see that every time.
Yeah.
Our neighborhood did it.
Ever recommended it, yeah.
You just got to have someone take the lead on it.
You recommended that as well.
I said it the last meeting, let's do that part. Yes, it's the last meeting we did, with Mr. Laren. And I'm happy to, if anybody wants to know how to do that, I can share with them how our neighborhood did it.
Very good. All right, supervisors, Ken?
Only question I had was, it's more about outstanding item, and that is the fireworks coordinates. We were modifying that for frequency and times and everything?
Right, I gave you that information, we talked about it at a meeting, and some suggestions. You were going to kind of mull it over, think about it.
Oh, okay.
And I figured I would bring the topic back over, up on the 16th.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
And hopefully, you guys will have some-
No, that's fine, I just wanted to get in the-
If anyone wants to talk to me about it, feel free to.
Again, Ken's reading my notes. And I'm not going to leave at next break. Yeah, I mean, that should be under unfinished business, because otherwise it falls through the cracks. And I agree with you, we've got to get that back, because Stephanie did a great memo on it and outlined everything for us. We just sat there and said, oh, yeah, good, blah, 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 and didn't take any action, and I think-
You wanted to think about it.
Well, nobody thought. I mean, let's be honest, bring it back, put it on the next agenda.
You're saying I'm not doing my job.
I didn't, I said, no, well, yeah, I guess no.
I actually, I actually have a note in the box.
Some did.
I thought everyone wanted to consider it.
It's split up to the 16th.
Okay, great.
So, I do have it. It was too long to consider.
Sorry, Ken, I didn't mean that, but I stopped looking at my notes.
All right, so you've already made your comments, okay, can't need any more?
I have nothing else, thank you.
All right, you don't have anything, right, Rick?
I do.
I thought you just made all your comments, so now we're going to go to Jen first.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jen, you're on.
All right, wonderful. So, what I put in front of the board is a program related to the, improving the environmental, the environment of Doylestown. Basically what it is, it's considered a Green Points program, and it's an incentive program for residents. So, when they put in it for a permit, if they meet the requirements for the permit, they have to pay the regular permit fees. But if they exceed them, as far as being environmentally sustainable, using green practices, recycling the waste materials from construction, using energy-efficient types of materials, they would receive a reduction in their permit fees by 1% per point. There are several other municipalities in the region that do something similar to this. And I thought it would be an interesting idea to bring up to the board in a way to incentivize people to start being more environmentally friendly. These points would only accumulate up to 50% off permit fees. And I had a meeting with Sinclair and Stephanie and Ken about the effects on the zoning and the financial, and apparently, I'll let Sinclair speak on that. But, but from my understanding is there would be minimal to no impact on our revenue for permits and that, and that it wouldn't be an excessive amount of work for, for the department.
I like it.
I do too. Those are my two questions, what, what would be the financial impact and who's going to be kind of making sure that, you know, when they say we're doing all these energy-efficient things, that they're actually getting done? If Sinclair doesn't feel like it's a heavy lift, I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
We put in a portion of this, some of the other municipalities do this as well, where they require a third party to verify that these things are done, so it doesn't put a lot of-
Yeah, but that's a cost then.
It's a cost to them.
It's a cost to them.
Right, right, right.
Third party would, they would have to come by-
Certify, just like any other, a lot of other, yeah.
Third-party certification, got it. Paid for by the, by the property owner. Okay.
I ran this by the EAC, they also gave their blessing.
Okay, I'm good, what do we have to do?
Authorization to prepare an ordinance so you can review it before we advertise it.
So moved. I mean, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Their second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, back to you, Rick.
Okay. The Planning Commission is working on cleaning up the ordinances, revising the ordinances, making them suitable. You'll be seeing those in another meeting or two.
16th?
16th, okay.
Judy will be here to-
And it's extensive, but Judy, as always, will do a good job explaining why we need them and what the benefits are. And you probably have been reading every month or so, or less, about PFOS. I just want to explain that our DTMA water far exceeds the minimum requirements that the DEP has of 70 parts per trillion. And I'm going to get this analogy wrong, but it's close. It's an Olympic-sized pool with seven grains of sand in it. That's how much PFOS is in the water, so it's per trillion. I mean, it's, we didn't have the instruments to even be able to check this level.
Okay.
So, we're, we're well within the limits. It's, so when you read all these headlines about people are drinking PFOS water, it's not the township water, it's some other areas. In fact, PFOS is in the Teflon pots, the Gorevex, is it?
Your Gore-Tex jackets, things like that.
So, we probably have as much PFOS in our body as, and, and one last thing, the people in Horsham that are being tested, I said ours is, the advisory is 70 parts per trillion. They're at 1,300, 1,400, that's, that's serious, that's another whole issue. Just want to make sure that we don't lump PFOS as, at those levels of what we're doing here in the township. And my last thing is, and it kind of goes with the next section about unfinished business, the fireworks. C.S. Davidson should be on here, because I'd like to know where that stands. I thought we were going to vote on that tonight. And then I'll yield some time today for about the Prokachy Builders. That's been a year now, and I still don't know where that stands. So, that's why I like things under unfinished business, so we don't, not that we're going to forget, but I think it'd be there to bring up to light what's going on. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
No. We don't turn it over to Dave. It's Ryan's turn.
Where are we at in Prokati?
I don't know, I forgot about it.
Wasn't it unfinished business?
No, I just have one thing. I just want to thank Doylestown Township Police and the chief for coming out to the 9/11 Heroes Run on Sunday at Font Hill. We had over 2,500 runners, there was over 4,000 people in attendance, and a couple of the officers were there, Jessica Whiteside, and, you know, I walked up to them, I thanked them for being there, and they were just so gracious, and, you know, each and every year, they do such a great job, so thanks for that.
Thank you.
And we had a few at the fireworks the other night, in the crowd with their families, as well as in uniform and on cycle, so they were very helpful with those who insisted on smoking. I think that was probably the only problem that we had the whole night.
You said no smoking four times.
Yeah, yeah, and so did they. It's in that escort people away. I don't understand it, you know, what they can't say. Okay, you done? I'm done. Oh, dog posters, they're $12, and they're wonderful, and dogs at Doylestown, it's from the dog park, it's their bicentennial project. And if you want to buy one and you don't have where, know where to put it, we figured it out. The door inside your garage.
Oh, yeah.
You know, when you, you know, it's that door, right? It's a perfect place for it, right?
Absolutely.
All right, did you want to, did you want to speak to that builder?
Payawella Construction.
That was close.
Yeah, so, actually, we've really heard nothing. We notified Payawella that we were assessing them liquidated damages. At the top of my head, I think it's somewhere in the range of $35,000 for so many days, $300 per day. We are holding $118,000 in retainage from Phase 1 on the project, and they were notified in writing, and we have not heard back as to, you know, a response. We will not release the retainage until they provide all the documents under the terms of the contract, which includes a release of liens from their subcontractors. So, that's where it's at right now, so we have not heard anything from Payawella. If we do, we will, we'll speak with Mr. Garten, because obviously the assessment of liquidated damages is an issue, but at this point in time, we have not heard anything.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on.
The chair, could you just mention where we're at? C.S. Davidson, I thought we were...
We have not received anything from C.S. Davidson.
I thought we were sending to them.
No, I'm not going to send it.
We got something back late last week, didn't we?
Last meeting on the 19th, we received their contract, I put it in front of the agenda, obviously was tabled. I then forwarded that information to Mr. Garten for review. They revised terms and conditions.
I didn't see it.
Asked Mr. Garten.
Saw it in your packet last meeting.
Yeah, and it was, we said, we rejected it.
Right.
Now, then what?
And I sent it to Mr. Garten for review, because what I need is direction as to, to go back to C.S. Datum to what we want them to revise.
We have to rewrite, we have to rewrite their contract provision? Is that what you're saying?
Think Dave's confused on what part we were confused on, maybe? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I understand that there's, I think the last time, Mrs. Lyons, you asked, you had given comments onto the section that you had issues with. We went back to C.S. Datum, they revised those terms and conditions and forwarded to us after...
That still wasn't right.
And I think it would be, if we could, I would ask that we at least indicate...
I did that once already.
Okay.
I did that the first time, and then they sent back something that was totally unintelligible. I'm not going to put another three hours into rewriting their contract. If they get it right, or we don't use them. That's how I think about it.
Okay, and I'm not, I will...
We've got to do something, then.
I think I got it late last week, did I not?
You got it with your packet and, you know...
It was in the last packet, and I forwarded separately to Mr. Garten in an email.
I will look at it and see where we are this week or early next week.
Do you have all the comments Barb gave you?
From previously, yes.
You have them all, okay.
We had, we each had comments, so. Mr. Garten wrote a review letter.
Barb's comments, that's all.
But I think we need to be a little bit more specific with...
No, we need to rewrite the damn thing, that's what we got to do. It's only one paragraph to this point. They cleaned up the rest of it.
Okay.
They made a lot of changes, they didn't make more.
It's the most important paragraph, but, all right.
I'm glad I brought it up.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad you wrote it up, too. Okay, yeah, we'll get, we'll get it, we'll get it done. Get it done. I just lose patience with floppy stuff. Anyway, moving on, Bucks County Prison Land Development Waiver Agreement.
The board will recall that you waived land development in a women's prison they're going to be constructing. One of the conditions was the execution of a waiver of land development agreement. It's in your packet, it's been reviewed and approved by the county solicitors, as well as the Director of Operations and our folks, so I recommend the board approval of the agreement.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, all right. Request to send items to auction. So, you got a memo there from Dave, a pickup and a trailer.
Yes.
Is there a motion to send these items to auction?
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a question. Are we replacing these items?
Good question.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And that's in the budget for this year?
The pickup is, was programmed. I'm not, I couldn't tell you exactly, I have to follow up with you on when it was programmed. But, yeah, they are, and you can see the age and the use, and, you know, and it's...
I see they need to be replaced.
Dan doesn't recommend replacement unless it needs to. The trailer's 20, 25 years old.
Yeah, it'll look great with a cake on it.
I have to tell you that it needed to go to, with a cake on it. All right, is there a motion, a second? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? No, okay. I never do that, I like doing that. All right, Pebble Ridge Woodridge Sewer Project, from Ilmoren Associates.
Yes, we have payment number two on the clearing and grubbing for $15,516.77 for Rutledge.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Anybody? Yes, Ryan seconding. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one...
It's a bigger, it's a bigger number.
This is the pump station.
This is for the pump, this is the start of the pump station work. This is payment number one on the pump station, so recommend that that also be approved as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions? Call and question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hammerstein, they requested an extension, and we've considered this, and here is the extension. You can speak to it if you like. Here's the application, excuse me, the Second Amendment to the amendment.
We'll recall that you settled the issue of the Hammerstein property with a very comprehensive stipulation that became a part of a court order. They needed to raise some funds, they haven't gotten there yet. They've asked for an extension for additional one year. The other participants, including the country club and their immediate neighbor, have agreed, but have told them we're not going to do more than one year, so John Van Levene assures me that...
This is it.
That the money's just rolling in. So, I think we would recommend that the board approve the stipulation to give those folks an extra year to do what they need to do to make what their vision is happen.
Question of clarification now, you know, they want to stick to the original agreement and have us wait any changes that we've put in place in the last couple of years since then.
No, the only thing they're asking for is not to be able to, to be able to submit their plans within three years and not within the original timeframe. But unless it's specifically earmarked in the stipulation, they have to live by current standards.
Current standards of today.
Today, unless it's, unless it's separated, and you know, you'll recall there were some exclusions in the stipulation about things applying.
Yes, yes.
So, unless it's one of those, they live by the current standards.
So, we do these ordinances next month. If one of them happens to apply to Hammerstein, he has to comply.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.